Now calls the, this meeting of October 20th of Iredell County Board of Commissioners's order. And Mr. Johnson will use his indication.
Yes, sir. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, once again, we, we come to you to conduct the affairs of this county, and we just ask, Father, that you will illuminate our minds and you will clear them of all other matters. Father, we'll dwell upon this intently, and that you will give us your wisdom. And, Father, we just pray that your name will be honored because of the actions we take, and we pray that the people of this county will be blessed, for we ask you in Christ's name. Amen.
I'll stand for pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Mashman, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, do have a couple of adjustments to the agenda, but I would like, before I do that, to just recognize David Nicholson. David Nicholson is in the audience tonight, and he is a representative of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, attending our meeting tonight. David?
First, as an addition, we have a request from the city of Statesville for approval of a resolution in conjunction with the new Statesville City Limit signage. And City Manager Rob Hights will be making that presentation, and that will be item O. Item O. And an additional request is from the Health Department for approval to apply for and accept $3,958.40 in funding for implementation of the North Carolina Smoke-Free Restaurant and Bar Law. And I have just added that to item G. Added that to item G.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask him? He said to accept funds, or...
Well, it's to apply for and accept funds.
From somewhere else?
Yes, from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Is that correct? Did I say that correct?
Okay. No objection.
And then I have one deletion, and this is going to be memo number 14, or item L. Memo number 14, or item L. The sheriff has requested that that item be removed from the agenda this evening, and no other date has been set for when that will go back on. Thank you. Those are the adjustments I have, Mr. Chair.
I hear a motion. We approve the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We have Anna Rice with the Council on Aging. Ms. Rice, we're glad to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, in mid-September, the Council on Aging learned that the administration on aging had received funding from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act for the Senior Nutrition Program. The law and grant awards specified and required that the funding be used specifically for congregate and home-delivered meals, and further specified the grant amounts. As a result of the stimulus funding, I'm here tonight to present, for your review and approval, Iredell's proposed American Reinvestment Recovery Act Funding Plan. I believe you have a copy of that funding plan. The funding was specified, as I mentioned, even the funding levels for congregate and home-delivered meals. We're pleased to be able to have access to this money, and I would appreciate your support in receiving the funding.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Rice? Is there a motion? We accept the grant funding?
So moved.
Motion's been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Five-o.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Meeting's now in the public hearing for consideration of install and finance agreement for expansion of the Union Grove Elementary School. Who's here to present that?
Ms. Blumenstein will make that presentation.
Thank you. There are representatives here from the school system that may want to speak as well. Iredell County Schools, or Iredell State's Schools was allocated Qualified School Construction Bonds Authority of $4.9 million. These funds were originally intended to be interest-free bonds, and what we found out, there's really only one buyer of these bonds nationally, Guggenheim, so there will be a supplemental interest on Qualified School Construction Bonds of 2% to 3%. Closing costs are also significantly higher than cost for traditional financing. The school system wants to use the funds to build a new building at Union Grove Elementary School. I went and pulled information, got some interest rates to compare to a regular direct placement bank-qualified loan that we've done before in installment financing agreement, excuse me, and it is about a $580,000 net present value savings to issue Qualified School Construction Bonds, even with the supplemental interest. Department of Public Instruction, last week, or Friday before last, exactly, sent out a memo saying they would allow counties to carry over the fiscal year '09 allocation to fiscal year '10 for Qualified School Construction Bonds, since most school systems and counties are having a very difficult time in finding a buyer for the bonds. Local banks, or banks within the state, and even nationally, aren't very interested in them, in fact, they're not interested in all, because there's not a profit level that the banks have reached this year that would cause them to be interested in tax credit If we're looking at just those two items, the Qualified School Construction Bonds are less expensive. After I came into this meeting, Kenny Miller, Dr. Miller with Iredell State's Schools, said to me that their preference would be to roll over the 2009 allocation in hopes that more funds would become available next year, and they would be able to start the project at Cool Spring Elementary. However, they would ask that the board allow them to proceed with the Union Grove Project by the county entering into an installment financing agreement directly with a bank as a direct placement bank-qualified loan. They feel like with the 15-year amortization, they have funds, or there are funds available, that the payment could be made from the existing revenue stream. I have not bid that financing, but in my discussions with several banks, they said a 4.25, or a 4.0 to a 4.28 interest rate is probably what would be the bid rate, and I had calculated my numbers at 4.25, which made a maximum annual debt service payment to be $529,052, which is within the $600,000 that Iredell State's Schools said they could So the decision tonight would be to issue QSCAB, move forward with issuing QSCABs, move forward with issuing a direct placement, and rolling over the QSCAB allocation to next fiscal year. I don't know if Kenny would like to add anything or not.
Mr. Miller?
The main concern we have, of course, is whether the bonds will sell or not. We're not sure that they will at this time because of the economic conditions. We feel like if we roll the bonds over, we still have that authority, and Cool Springs will be a larger project, and we could see probably more savings in the long run if the economy picks up because of the larger amount of money associated with Cool Springs. We can handle the direct placement for $4.9 million from our existing revenues, but we would not be able to handle the Cool Springs project with a direct placement. So for us, this is a much cleaner, a much more quickly acceptable form of financing. It will let us start the project on time, which we are entering into, and I have Rob Jackson with me and can tell you the construction details, but we're going to be entering into contracts with local vendors and local construction companies, so it'll enable us to get that money back into the economy more quickly. If the, if the QSCABs do not sell, then we could be, it could be drawn out into the summer, or even early fall, before we even have any kind of funding. We'd have to come back to you with the direct placement option. So at this point, we think it'd be best to roll those over, roll over that, that's QSCABs, and let the economy pick up a little, and then see where we're at. Question?
Okay. We could do the QSCAB on Union Grove, but they're difficult to sell at the present time.
Correct.
But the state has pushed back the deadline and says that we can do those later because of market conditions. They're going to give us an extended deadline to do the QSCAB.
Correct.
So you want to kick that down the road a ways and go ahead and do the direct placement on Union Grove now, and you'll do Cool Springs with the QSCAB next year if the market allows?
Yes.
All right. How will the debt be serviced on Cool Springs next year?
Well, that'll be the, we'll have to look at that. We definitely cannot handle Cool Springs next year if we do direct placement. If we have the 0% bonds as an option, then that gives us a lot more opportunity to possibly do it. There's no guarantees we can do Cool Springs next year with or without the QSCABs.
Okay.
We'll just have to see what the economy does. If the sales tax revenues do not pick up, and the economy doesn't pick up, then we see the Cool Springs project being pushed out further.
So the trade-off here is, if we did the QSCAB on Union Grove, we could potentially save $580,000. But if we don't do the direct placement loan on Union Grove now, we may still be in the next year and, and only be able to do one of the projects anyway. Is that kind of where we're at?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. Since we are in a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak for or against this, this matter? Hearing none? Is there a motion? Excuse me. I need to close the public hearing. And now, the public hearing closes. Is there a motion?
Can I ask another question? Ms. Blumenstein, if we were to do the QSCAB today, it's, it's going to require... We're going to have to sweeten the pot a little bit to the tune of 2% or 3% to get somebody to buy these bonds anyway, right?
That's correct. And in addition, the closing cost will be twice what they are for a direct placement, and there are very strict reporting requirements of the construction contractors, because anything financed with ERA, or as a result of ERA, the reporting requirements fall under the Davis Bacon Act for employment.
So that was what Mr. Miller was attempting to speak to a moment ago, when we said we'd have more latitude in our selection of contractors and so forth?
Well, we still would be able to do a C M RIS, but the problem's going to be that contractor with all of the extra paperwork, the Davis Bacon Act, is going to have to sweeten their pot a little bit, so the chances are that bids are going to come higher, because of all the red tape.
If we use the QSCAB on Union Grove, and then come back next year, you can also, if it's extended, could you use it again on Cool Springs?
No, well...
Dr. Miller, will you go to the mic as well, so that what you say will be recorded?
Be glad to.
Well, I mean, they're not using that money.
We have authority for 4.9 million QSCABs.
Okay.
Next year, they will ask us again if we are interested in that authority. We'll come back to you next year and say, okay, we have the ability to get this much money. At this point, they're going to let us roll over those QSCABs, so we could combine those two, and we would come close to what we would, we hope we would come close, along with other funding sources, to what we'd need for Cool Springs. The issue will be debt service, and whether the economy picks up. Also, if the economy doesn't pick up, the chances are still there that the QSCABs will not sell. So what we're looking for right now is the option that's going to allow us to move forward with Union Grove Project, which those folks are, are ready to have happen. It will cost us a little bit more, but we can handle that within our debt service stream right now, and it's well within our budget. And we think that what savings we would have is going to be eaten up with the Davis Bacon Act, the bidding increases that'll be associated, the extra closing costs, other factors, and the fact that we will have to push the project out further and further, and the further you push the project out, the more likelihood there would be that if the economy perks back up, then your bids go up. So there's, there's a lot of issues involved there that we felt like this would be the cleanest, neatest, and get the project on the road to success. So this is the direction we think is the smartest way to go at this point.
Okay. If we push the 4.9 over into next year, I take it that the Cool Spring project is significantly more than 4.9, so what you're hoping for is to push the 4.9 over into next year. If more QSCAB money becomes available next year, you will put whatever's available with this 4.9?
That's correct.
Now, let, let me ask you, I don't mean to wear you down about it.
Right.
But the project at Cool Springs, is it designed in a, in such a manner that if you get another $2 million, but you don't get enough to hold through the project, and we can service the debts, you can do something for those folks, or you're just going to hold off?
Will let Rob speak to that, since he has the design thing.
The way the building is designed, it'd have to go as a solid one project. It's a two-story, multi-level, tying into the existing building, so it's kind of hard to break that apart.
Total amount on that?
Total budget's $12.8.
What situation out at Cool Springs now is, as far as enrollment? Is it still continuing to grow?
It did not grow this year, but you had the backscaling of the kindergarten birth date, so the enrollment was down from, from that point. It's about 440, 450 students, which is the maximum for that school. It's also maximum for the septic system, and that's part of the project, is to upgrade the septic system with the expansion.
So it's not a matter of overcrowding as much as it is an old building and septic system?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I think I'm satisfied.
Is there a motion?
If I make a motion, we'll go ahead and prove, Mr. Chairman. It looks like they're trying to get done what they can with the money they've got. They don't have any assurance that they're going to be able to do Cool Springs next year anyway, but this is their best chance to make that happen, so... And I think any difference in financing on the QSCAB, I, I'd be surprised if you get anybody to buy them at 3%, but if inflation kicks in, so any potential savings, I think, will be minimal at best. So I'd make a motion, go ahead and prove this request.
Okay. Motion's been made. We approve the request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. On administrative matters, tonight, we're going to go down item by item, and we will, we will ask for your consent, and then at the end of the administrative matters, someone will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. If you want to pull something off the administrative matters list, if, in other words, if you don't agree with it being a consent, we'll bring it up and, and talk about it and, and vote on it as we would regularly. Mr. Mashman?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the first two items, item A and B, Ms. Blumenstein?
Thank you. I presented in your package a proposed red flag policy. Hopefully, you will adopt it. We are now, excuse me, counties and cities are required by the Federal Trade Commission to establish and identify, and implement an identity theft prevention program to help identify instances where a person has committed fraud by using another person's identifying information to establish an account with Iredell County. The policy must identify red flags, such as notification from credit reporting agencies, suspicious documents, suspicious personal information, or suspicious account activity. We need to provide steps to detect red flags, such as requiring certain information to open accounts, say with the solid waste department, or inspections department, to verify the identities, such as driver's license and picture IDs, to independently contact customers, to identify if the customer requests specific account information, verify changes in address, and verify changes in banking information. We also need to take steps to prevent and mitigate identity theft by monitoring the accounts for evidence of identity theft, changing passwords that prevent access to computers, notify the finance director for determination of appropriate steps to take, notify law enforcement, and to protect customer identifying information. I will have oversight responsibility, ensure appropriate training for county staff, and review staff reports regarding detection of red flags. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein? If not, as, we approve this by consent.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I have the next item.
Yes, you do.
I'll go on to it. Mitchell Community College Vice President Finance Dick LaFever notified me last week that the plans are complete, and they hope to have those out on the streets for bid this week for the Mooresville Classroom Building Project. This has been in the works for the last couple years, so I can seek, go ahead now and seek financing for the $2,785,000 approved by Board Action on December 16, 2008. It does require a public hearing, so I would request that you call for a public hearing to be held at your November 3 meeting. Bond Council did prepare a resolution, and I put that at each, each of your places for tonight. If you would like, I'll be, be glad to read it, but they are very similar to what you've seen before. And actually, since the change, and since we're moving away from QSCABs to direct placement financing for the Iredell State's School Project, I think the most cost-efficient thing to do would be to combine these two and to seek one installment financing agreement for both projects to save on a second set of closing costs. And I'd request that you call for a public hearing at your next meeting.
Any questions? Consent?
These are the, this is the plans that we approved, you say, back in December of '08?
Yes, sir. The total cost of the facility will be about $5.3 million. We've already spent about $900,000 on land purchases from the 2007, or 2008 general obligation bond. Time flies when you're having fun, doesn't it? When that's, the last GO bond referendum approved $6 million total for Mitchell Community College projects, and about $900,000 has been spent on land, and additional funds have been spent on engineering and architectural fees. The college itself has in its coffers some funding to go towards this, and then the county has some funds in our fund balance, and then the balance that was needed was $2,785,000.
Okay.
And that's what the Board considered last December, when College President Dr. Easton appeared before you.
And we're satisfied this debt can be serviced with existing revenue streams?
Yes, sir. We, typically, the Board has designated one-half, the, the amount equal to one-half cent on the property tax rate. It's not the tax rate that's, that was restricted for that, but that's how we had developed our college funding a few years ago for their capital needs. And that's already in the budget. We have put the additional funds in this reserve for the last couple years, and that's how we have the funds here on hand.
Okay.
Will not require a tax increase.
Anyone else? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ronnie Thompson with the Fire Marshal's Office will present the next item concerning the Iredell County Code and revisions.
Okay, the North Carolina Fire Code was adopted and placed in Chapter 4 for building construction, but we need it put also in Chapter 5 for the Fire Prevention Code, and what we're asking is, for the sake of consistency, is just allowing it to be also put in Chapter 5.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Item D is approval of the September 2009 refunds and releases. I have a letter from the Tax Assessor's Office, says there are, these are the refunds and releases to be presented October 20th, Commissioners' Meeting. Mr. Doodle said that none of the county commissioners are involved in any of the refunds or releases, and he recommends approval.
Consent?
Consent.
Items E, F, G, H, and I are all presented by Ms. Donna Campbell, the Health Director. Ms. Campbell?
Good evening. The first item I have to present is our annual write-offs for the Health Department. We are requesting authorization to write off uncollected patient accounts in the amount of $19,351.53. These accounts have had no activity since June 30 of 2006, and it is a 4.19% of our billing, so that's a good, that's a, a good amount for a healthcare entity. We are going to turn the eligible accounts over to the debt set-off program, so we may be able to recoup some of this. And so far, since beginning debt set-off, we've collected $45,990. Any questions?
Okay. Consent?
The next item I have is request for approval of a budget amendment to transfer funds into salary and fringe. In August, the Commissioners approved a budget amendment for $66,472.23, and that was part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and that was to provide seasonal flu vaccinations in the school systems. And so what we're asking now is to, approval to move $43,150 from the contracted service line to the salary and fringe line, so that we can pay salary and fringe for our staff.
so that we can pay salary and fringe for our staff. Any questions?
Questions? Consent?
Consent.
The next item I have is approval for, request for approval for a budget amendment to accept additional aid to county funds for immunizations. We've been notified that we're to receive seven thousand dollars to be used to help improve our capacity for immunization service delivery. And at the time of the, to meet the deadlines for the Board of Health and the Commissioners' Meeting, we had not received our quotes back yet on what we were gonna purchase with this, and we're still waiting for those. But what our intent is, is to purchase a telephone auto dollar system for reminder calls when patients are delinquent on their immunizations. This particular system will go directly into the North Carolina Immunization Registry and will do, identify those patients that are delinquent, and will call them. And we're anticipating this costing between five and six thousand dollars. Any additional funds left over, we would use to purchase medical-grade vaccine refrigerators to use in the immunization rooms.
Any questions? Consent?
Also included in this, or in this item, I have an addition to the agenda that Mr. Mashburn talked about, and I apologize for this being placed last minute, but we received this, and it has a one-week turnaround. Beginning January second, two thousand and ten, House Bill Two, which is smoke-free restaurants and bars, goes into effect, and the local health departments are responsible for implementation of this new law, but no funds were appropriated by the state budget for implementation. So the Department of Public Health has sent out a request for proposal to the local health departments, seeing if we would be interested in applying for three thousand five hundred and eight dollars and forty cents for education of the public and business community to help them understand what the law is, and then also an additional four hundred and fifty dollars in funding to help purchase coasters that contain information about what the law is and contact information. So we had just received this and wanted to be able to implement this. What they're hoping to do is inform us if we receive it by October thirtieth, and we could begin implementation by November first, to try to get the restaurants and the community educated on what this new law means. So I do apologize for the short notice on this, but I was given a very short notice, too.
Questions? Consent?
Consent.
My next item is a request for approval of a budget amendment to accept emergency preparedness funds in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for H1N1 pandemic flu implementation. We have been receiving phased money through the state for this, and this is the implementation part of the money. And this will allow us to actually pay for staff and for contract staff to implement a mass vaccination program for H1N1 vaccine. It'll also help us purchase educational materials and implement a media campaign to educate the public about the H1N1 flu and also the vaccine program. And so we're asking for approval of amendment to accept two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I do have a little additional information that we've just received that we are really gonna be receiving three hundred and one thousand six hundred and one dollars. And so we have not got the agreement addenda's on that yet, so I'll be bringing you back later in December after the Board of Health has approved it, a request to accept the additional sixty-one thousand dollars.
Questions? Consent?
Consent.
My next item is to accept a budget amendment for twenty thousand dollars in pandemic flu planning funds. Back in August, we came to you to ask for acceptance of sixty thousand dollars in planning money. Well, the state actually sent us eighty thousand. So we're here tonight to ask for approval to accept the additional twenty thousand dollars in funding for planning for H1N1 pandemic flu.
Okay, any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item J will be presented by Lynn Deal with the Social Services Department requesting a budget amendment.
Good evening. Our agency is requesting that the Commissioners recognize Food and Nutrition Services Administration funds that were awarded to our county in the amount of forty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars to provide overtime to the Food and Nutrition Services staff in our agency. This is part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funds.
Questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron Smith has item K.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to follow up on the next stage of our land use planning process and development of a potential unified development ordinance. Now that we have finished the 2030 Horizon Plan, it's time to start looking at the implementation. All of those considers and recommendations and strategies that we talked about through the approval process are now going to be deliberated and potentially put into different ordinances. What I'm suggesting is that we take a look at all of our development ordinances from the planning and development side, which would include zoning, subdivision, erosion control, the watershed ordinance, everything that more or less deals with property in a development fashion, and putting them together in one ordinance that deals with them, you know, in one book, instead of having to deal with six or seven different ordinances and consistently going back and forth. Because of the comprehensive nature of the 2030 Plan, it would probably be easier for us to make the amendments or to propose the amendments and put them all in one concise document that will address issues from a subdivision and zoning standpoint, and also from a watershed, because they do all relate. I feel like this is something that we can undertake with current staff. It's a big project, probably would take us at least a year. I put a proposed schedule, project schedule in your packet, and I feel pretty confident that we can stick with this schedule with the staff that we have today. Because of the downturn, you know, obviously, our department has taken, is not quite as busy as it once was. So this would be an excellent opportunity to use some of our staff time in a very good way and put some people, not necessarily to work, but give them much more to do and have a very good end result at the end of the day. So I would recommend that we go in this direction, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Smith, I spoke to you earlier. I've been a proponent of this for some time. I never pressed you on it because we were so busy rezoning property that I didn't feel like you had the opportunity to do it. So I would encourage you to go ahead and proceed on this. At some point, I think it's gonna require a little, at least a briefing to this board is exactly what I was entailed in this. I don't know when the best time would be. I was looking at your calendar here.
Yes, one schedule every first meeting.
Yeah. I was thinking about our retreat on the sixth. Mr. Mashburn, have you pretty much got a full day planned for us?
No, actually, I think this is kind of one of the things that we had talked about possibly that we would have time to do more of that.
Maybe he could spend an hour or so with us and let us know exactly what all's involved?
Okay.
Anyone else have a question? Consent?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item L was deleted. The next item is a request to accept six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred dollars in Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Mr. Warren?
Thank you. Good evening. Back in the spring, I came before the board to ask for your permission to apply for a energy grant through the Department of Energy as part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. It was a formula grant in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred dollars. And certainly by now, I would have expected to have gotten the award notice. We were thinking there was gonna be an award notice forthcoming in August, and we didn't receive word. However, I have been tracking it on a regular basis through the websites, and also in conjunction with the tracking that I personally have been doing, the National Association of Counties has a program officer assigned to tracking some of the federal stimulus grants. And one of the email messages I received just recently, and why I'm here tonight, was that when they do make this award, they're gonna be doing it electronically over a website called Fed Connect. And furthermore, when they do give you notice of the award, they only give you a certain amount of time, five days, in order for you to respond. We won't be getting, in other words, a Federal Express package with papers for the Commissioners to sign, as may have been happening in the past with some of the grants. Therefore, what I'm here tonight to ask is for the Commission to delegate the authority to myself as the point of contact to accept the grant award when it is forthcoming on Fed Connect.
Questions? Consent?
Yeah, these are the projects you intend to do.
Those are the projects that we discussed back in the spring. I thought that might be a good thing for the Commission to have, to see what we'd be doing. Mr. Mashburn asked me to put together a little packet to refresh your memories about what this grant entailed, what some of the cost savings were, and we're really hopeful that this will be a great benefit to the county with the energy efficiency upgrades to the buildings and the geothermal heat and air for the U animal shelter. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Rob Height, City Manager of City of Statesville, is here to present item O. I think he plans on using the overhead.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Mashburn for allowing me to visit with you tonight on short notice. We have not, we have not refreshed our city limit signs for about seventeen years, and I think they show it at any entrance to the City of Statesville. And in the intervening period, DOT has established several pages of regulations involving how one designs a city limit sign. And somewhere along the line, we found out that, I guess, as a sign of confidence in a city's ability to do a city limit sign, we must get a concurrent resolution of the County Commission that our city limit sign is, I guess, tasteful to the county. We have worked very, very stridently to produce a city limit sign that would be both acceptable to my board and to the County Commissioners, and we hope the staff has succeeded. I tried to spell sneak Joel Mashburn in, but I got caught, and that's the best I could do, was Thomas Marshburn, so I apologize for that, Joel. But in all seriousness, the Department of Transportation does now require for any city in the state of North Carolina that they get a concurrent resolution of the County Board whenever we establish new city limit signs. The sign that you see before you would be on our four interstates and on our large highways like US sixty-four and twenty-one. The small roads coming in from the county will have a smaller sign without the All America City symbol, just due to the size of the sign. But we believe that this will dress up the all entrances to the City of Statesville and remove a lot of old signs that are pretty much faded. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And thank you for your time.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Height. My importance has expanded beyond my wildest imagination.
Well, having served with you for many years on the airport, I remember with great, with great fondness your ability to do interior decorating and landscaping and other things, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you recognizing that in public. Looks fine to me.
Consent?
Those are the administrative matters, Mr. Chair.
Approval amendments. Consent? So motion, we approve all consent items.
Sure.
Motion's been made, we approve consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries, five oh. Announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have three announcements for Crossroad Behavioral Healthcare. Appointments to boards and commissions. Nurse and Home Advisory Board, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Ms. Kathy Smith.
Kathy Smith has been nominated. I move nominations be closed and accept Kathy by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Adult Home Committee, Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Margaret Marks.
Margaret Marks has been nominated. I move nominations be closed and accept Margaret by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 Jury Commission, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Irene Blackburn.
Irene Blackburn has been nominated. I move nominations be closed and accept Irene Blackburn by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Ms. Blackburn. Okay, unfinished business. Public Comment Committee, period. Do we have any?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. New business. County Managers Report.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have no closed session tonight. Is there a motion we adjourn?
I move.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.